Hi everyone, this is Alexander Carlos with the Alexander News Show. And my guest today is the next, and I'm pulling for him, and I'm gonna help him. Miami-Dade County Commissioner for District 11, Brian, Mr. Brian Paz Hernandez. Thank you for appearing on the show.
Thank you very much, Alexander. I'm so happy to be here.
Awesome. We're gonna do this, we're gonna, I'm gonna get straight to the point with the questions and a couple of videos. Let me just first do the intro, man. Sure, I wanna ask you about ball and chain, what's wrong with your ball and chain, what, why do you harass? These are all homeless people. This is Alexander News Show with Alexander Carlos. We go after the news. What, tell me what's up with this whole climate change thing? What is your opinion on the climate? What? 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 Welcome, Mr. Hernandez, to a new revamped edition of the Alexander News Show. We're live, where we're gonna make mistakes in our speaking skills. Gracias por venir al show bilingüe de Alexander News Show. Bienvenidos señor, como estás?
Estoy muy bien, muchas gracias por tenerme, thanks for having me.
Vamos a llegar a punto. Quiero preguntarte alguna pregunta en español, you know, we're gonna do some English. Let me ask you first in English and then you can answer in Spanish. What inspired you wanna run, to wanna run for District 11 Commissioner against this, uh... And man, do I got some really tough things to say about this Robert Dico. What inspired you, man?
So, mi nombre es Brian Paz Hernandez, yo soy candidato para el comisionado del condado de Miami-Dade. Muchas gracias, Alexander, por tenerme en su programa. Yo soy 327 en la boleta, yo decidí postularme porque soy harto y cansado de la congestión del tráfico. Estoy harto y cansado de los políticos corruptos que toman dinero de intereses especiales e ignoran al pueblo. Y estoy harto y cansado del alto costo de la vivienda. Estamos viendo el alquiler, los seguros de la propiedad, los impuestos, todos están muy altos. Y quiero asegurar que la gente pueda ahorrar su dinero en vez de gastarlo tanto en estas cosas. So, yo vi como residente del Distrito 11 que Roberto Gonzalez es una persona muy corrupta. Que es una persona que no, de verdad le interesa hablar con el pueblo sobre los problemas serios que el área de Kendall tiene que lidiar. Y ha tomado miles y miles y miles de dólares, casi ha recogido un millón de dólares en intereses especiales. Entonces, yo soy el único candidato que, que lo puede detener antes que gane o posiblemente gane agosto 20. Y yo soy el candidato de, del pueblo, yo han tocado cuatro mil puertas. Yo he hablado con miles de personas en el, en el distrito sobre los problemas serios de nuestro área. Entonces, al fin y al día, yo quiero recortar los impuestos de la propiedad. Quiero reducir los costos del seguro de la propiedad. Y quiero combatir la corrupción política que está horrible en nuestra comunidad.
So, that's your inspiration, I'm gonna say in Spanish, eso es lo que te inspiró para correr contra este corrupto individual. You mind if you share this, please, also in Spanish, I mean, in, in English?
Sure, so my name is Brian Paz Hernandez, I'm 327 on the ballot. And I decided to run for Commissioner because there's just so many problems in our community. We're seeing high cost of living, political corruption, traffic congestion, all of these are going unaddressed. Including, also, another thing that I decided to run, is because we've seen this overdevelopment of apartment complexes in District 11. They're building all these mid-rise apartments, four or five stories.
Terrible.
Yeah, by the way, Kendall Baptist Hospital.
More traffic.
Exactly, it represents more traffic. They built these new ones by Lowe's, by 137th Avenue where there used to be a strawberry farm. And it's really just gonna make the traffic congestion 10 times worse. So if I'm elected, I wanna cut property taxes, work to reduce property insurance costs, stop the overdevelopment of apartment complexes, so I'm actually for a moratorium on any new development in Kendall.
I already love you, man.
Thank you. And, and...
Best friends will love you too, there are people that live there too, oh my god, yeah.
Oh, great, good.
Well, I already know, one family voted for you already, three votes in the household.
Nice, thank you, thank you, thank you. But yeah, that's my feel, I mean, listen, it's just, bottom line, it's getting too expensive to live here. Corrupt politicians aren't doing anything about it. And the density in Kendall, there's just too many things going on, too much development, and people don't want that. Kendall, I've lived here my entire life, it's, it's a very relaxed, chill community. And if you continue building all these apartments, it's gonna turn into something else.
Exactly, look, before we could proceed, find Alexander News Show in most pod, um, let's talk about the podcast. This is mainly, this, this show's gonna be later on, on the iHeart Podcast Network and Spotify and most other podcast platforms. And also, you can find, I'm gonna get video clips of this and post it on most of my social media platforms, which, all the, all of it is below the ticker right here and below the video. And, um, this, well, obviously, we're live now on YouTube channel. And thank you to all of you for joining. If you wanna make a comment and ask Mr. Hernandez a question, please do so. If not, you can also text "show" the phone number to the show and I will get your question and, and, and ask the question from a constituent or from somebody outside the district. And I will ask Mr. Hernandez as well, as long as it's a respectful question. I will not allow any insults towards Mr. Hernandez, he doesn't deserve that. And the phone number's below here, if you're a business or, and you wanna promote the show or sponsor it, emails are also below the screen. So en español, toda la información de la plataforma de Alexander News Show está abajo de la pantalla y el ticker o, o el video, okay? Y podcasts también, este show después va a estar en la plataforma de podcasts, the iHeart Podcast Network and Spotify. Y otra vez, Alexander News Show se encuentra en las redes sociales casi todas, okay? Y puedes amantar o nosotros unimos si tú eres un negocio y quieres, tú sabes, promocionar, darle promociones o lo que sea al negocio, a Alexander News Show. Y también Cash App, you can donate to the show Cash App, la información también abajo, puedes dar una donación. Bueno, okay, I got, I got that stuff out of the way. So, Mr. Hernandez, first thing I wanna ask you, what is your plan to combat government corrupt, uh, public corruption, sir?
Yeah, so first off, um, this is my first time running for office and I've learned so much as a candidate. You know, it's really the Wild West down here in Miami. Any one millionaire or a few of them can create a PAC and put in as much money as they'd like into their, uh, into the PAC and run ads for or against the candidates. So my opponent, uh, the appointed Commissioner, Rob Gonzalez, has raised close to a million dollars. And you look at the, this is all public record, people who donated to his PAC, people who donated to his campaign. There's not, there's almost no donations from, you know, real people who are, you know, mom and pop, business owners.
By the way, you keep talking, I'm gonna just show a picture of Robert Dico, what he looks like, so people can see what he looks like.
So, if you look at his campaign, almost all of the donations are $1,000 contributions, which is the limit. So it's only very wealthy people or people connected to corporations that are supporting him. Whereas my campaign contributions, they range $15, $10, $100, you know, they range. Because I get donations from everyday people, clergy members, teachers, retired individuals, activists, things like that. It's a real grassroots campaign, people power campaign. So what I wanna do about corruption, number one, campaign finance reform. Number two, I wanna have bold ethics reforms. And I'm talking about more transparency in county government, so that the people who, um, work in government, the county commissioners that are in power, they have to disclose all of their financial, uh, information, especially as it relates to business with the, uh, with the county. So, Alexander, I'm sure you're aware of this, so many of the, uh, of the county commission, what they do is the budget, right? And so, uh, there are so many contractors that the county government does business with. And we've seen time and time again that you see, uh, friends of the commissioners or family members of the commissioners, uh, get those contracts. For ejemplo, Jimenez, when he was mayor, he had a family member who had a contract with the government and it was a contract in the millions of dollars. So, Jimenez was using his position as mayor to enrich his family. That's messed up, that shouldn't be happening.
Absolutely, I totally agree, you know, I'm gonna put a video from this, from the, you took, you asked, you took him straight, straight, you took him straight to the, you like the smackdown on this, on that Robert Dico. Let me, uh, let me post this video and then I have a question from a viewer. Who are his donors? Who's Robert Dico Gonzalez's donors? You can, you don't have to say all of them, but a couple of the donors, but let's put this video first. And, and then we'll, you can answer that question, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Let me see if it's just, okay, go for it.
To my opponent's campaign finance records of his PAC, America First PAC, and also of his campaign. And you'll see that he received $15,000 from Big Easy Casino in HoloDome Beach, $21,000 from Secure Wrap Company.
As a matter of fact, when I first ran for office, I raised $100,000 in $10 checks, $100 checks, $15 checks. That's how I did it the first time. Now let me tell you, contributions at this point are legal and they are done. And a lot of these companies that this poor gentleman is talking about have contributed to the mayor, have contributed to every single commissioner on that dais. Now let me be clear, every single one of those donors understands that, to me, their contribution means nothing but the fact that they get to speak to me, that's it. I listen to every single person, whether they donate to me or not. But I will say this, because they're illegal right now, there's two things that that means. When you get these contributions, you have influence and you have support. Unfortunately, the gentleman that is running against me does not have either. I have that.
All right, I wanted to cut him off because he doesn't deserve to be heard. So, the poor gentleman, look, you're not a poor gentleman, you're a teacher.
Yeah.
This guy, this guy, Mr. Robert Dico Gonzalez is a piece of shit. Sorry, YouTube is, uh, you know, we could, I could say this, but honestly, YouTube's not gonna censor me because I said that. But honestly, you're not a poor gentleman, your name is Mr. Brian Paz Hernandez. You're a teacher at a high school. And you're also gonna have a chance to say really quickly some things about yourself and your background. But tell me, who are his donors and can you tell me what this video is all about, please, what you saw?
Yeah, well, uh, I don't think he's a piece of S, but I do, I do think that he should not be Commissioner. And the reason is because he is corrupt. His donors include $15,000 from a casino in HoloDome Beach. Why would a casino in Broward give money to a Commissioner in Miami-Dade County?
Because, because they wanna build a casino in West Kendall, that's the only reason I can think.
That's the only reason I can think of as well, and I think that's likely the case. Second, the, uh, Secure Wrap Company and, but if you see most of it, both of his package, his campaign, it's real estate developers. People who probably what they want is to build more apartment complexes, to build shopping malls and to continue to develop in West Kendall, all the way to the urban development line. In fact, when Gonzalez was, well, is Commissioner, but a few months ago, he sponsored a bill to build a new road connecting Crom Avenue and, um, and, and another street closer to the Executive Airport. And this road would have been built on top of farmland. And so that is already laying the groundwork for bigger, further development on, on this farmland. So we can see that he has been deeply influenced by real estate developers and is doing their bidding.
So, I'm gonna, we're gonna stay with this corruption, is that okay with you?
Yeah, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
It is really offensive that this guy called me a poor gentleman, I mean, I...
That's why I had to call him a POS, I'm sorry, I had to say that, because you're not a poor gentleman, so please, uh, speak, sir.
Yeah, I mean, listen, uh, I'm a high school teacher, I don't make that much money, but, uh, I, teaching is a respectful profession. And I, and I really enjoy doing it, and so...
You make a difference in the lives of many kids, which Robert Dico doesn't do anything, he's a lawyer, he's a lawyer, injury lawyer.
He's a personnel injury attorney.
Exactly.
Uh, and his firm is worth $5 million, he's a millionaire himself, so he gets to live an extravagant lifestyle, good for him. But I think attacking somebody like myself, based on, on money is really messed up.
And can you, can you, we'll get back to the corruption of this Robert Dico, but can you give me a quick background of yourself, sir?
Yeah, so I'm a high school history teacher, I teach ninth grade world history. Before then, I worked at United Way Miami as a financial coach. I helped dozens of people get back on their feet financially. We also provided, um, grants to individuals who were gonna get evicted or couldn't pay their bills.
God bless.
Thank you very much. United Way is great, they do such amazing work.
Robert Dico never done anything like that.
No, he hasn't, and before then, I worked at Catalyst Miami, another nonprofit, where I was a community organizer. So I worked, um, to, you know, trying to wake people up about the issues in Kendall. So we worked on affordable housing and other issues. And so I've worked in the nonprofit sector and the political world for, for many, many years. I've been active in politics since I was 14 years old. And, um, I think it's, it's really time for a change, you know, I'm 29 years old, so it's not every day that a 29-year-old runs for county commissioner, but I'm ready to deliver results on, on day one and, and actually listen to people.
God bless you, man, um, that's awesome. So, let's get back to this corruption thing really quickly. I'm gonna have a video that I'm gonna play. What really got me and the reason, you know, before this whole thing happened with the relocating of the district office, sorry, my heart rate goes up when I think about this, sorry.
Breathe, breathe.
Yeah, yeah, he decided to move his, the district office to a second-story building that's in the border. So this is how pathetic Robert Dico is. His office is on, district office is on the border with another scumbag Commissioner, um... I free, I, he's such a scum, I forgot his name, but the guy in Westchester, the other district, it's just like, one block, if you go one block south, you're in his district. That's how pretty bad it is. So I went to his office and I asked David Gonzalez, who went to elementary school with me, and started saying, "Well, I used to help you out because people used to bully you." Man, David, I kicked your, I kicked your ass when you were in elementary, okay? So, tranquilo, okay? You don't, when I asked you, when I told you that, you were like, "Oh, no, I don't remember that, what I did." But anyways, getting back to this, I told him, "Why didn't you move the office to Candle Drive and like 157th Avenue?" Yeah, by the way, me and his communications director went to high, uh, elementary together.
Interesting.
Small world, but I told him, "Why didn't you move the district office? Why didn't your commissioner move the district office to Candle Drive and 157th Avenue? That's more central, where you moved it to is not, and why did you have to move it?" So, this, uh, the total thing is $70,000 totaled wasted taxpayers' money. Recklessly spends $4,500 a month in taxpayer money on rent for an empty, unused office. I don't know if it's still empty, the other one that was...
It's still empty, yes.
Yeah, can you talk to, to me a little bit more about it?
Yeah, we're on the same page, Alexander, this was a gross misuse of taxpayer dollars and frankly makes him unqualified to be Commissioner by grossly misusing people's money. This isn't his money, this is a people's money. This is tax dollars who work really hard, unlike him, to make a buck. And we pay a lot in property taxes and, and that money needs to be properly spent. Over the course of nine years, it's gonna cost taxpayers $1 million, this district office move, $1 million! And with $1 million, we could be using that...
My $70,000 thing, forget it, it's gonna be more.
Yeah, so here's the deal, we're paying for the empty district office, the original one, that had been the district office for a long, long time. So right now, it's still empty and we have to pay the lease on that for the next few months.
Wow.
Then, the new district office, so there's a literally, we're paying for an unused district office, thanks to Robert, uh, Robert's decision-making. Then you have the second district office, which is thousands of dollars more expensive in terms of leasing and, and maintenance fees and all this stuff. And like you said, it's, it's kind of out of the way, it's not really necessarily in a central location.
I went there, it's the second floor, you have to, the other, when I went there, the elevator was shut down. By the way, before we go any further, let me put this video real quick, um, this is my favorite video I did of him. And then we could talk a little bit more about it. Commissioner Robert Dico Gonzalez is an abuser of Miami-Dade taxpayer money.
We got crooked politician, Rob Gonzalez, who gives money to companies he represents and then the next day switches the registered agent because he's a crook. What's up, Rob? Why are you so fake and phony, man? Look at this fake-ass looking-ass politician.
He's also a butt-licker of Miami-Dade County Mayor, Daniela Cava.
He can dress however he wants, he's still crooked and fake. Guys, I used to like party when I was, when I was a kid with this loser. I used to go over to his cousin's house and we used to play together.
Okay.
Wow, that's, that's, that's intense.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so keep commenting, sir, in regards to this office, why is this, what, okay, let's, let's ask, let me ask you this. If you get elected and I hopefully, hopefully, I pray to God, the people, the 225,000 residents that live in that district, most of those people are, a lot of them are voters, will make the right decision, vote you in and vote this guy out. Where would you move the district office to if you, if you could do it?
I would keep the original one, keep the original one, sell back the second office, close it, go back to the original one. We were, we've already, that's been known as the District 11 office for, for decades. When Mr. Martinez was Commissioner, that was the office that he used still. I think, I also went and visited the original district office recently to take pictures. It was perfectly fine, it was perfectly fine, there's nothing wrong with it. And, and it's cheaper, the rent is cheaper, so we should just go back to that one.
I totally agree with that. Now, let's get on to the next thing before we, we, uh, we have a few more minutes. He voted on a terrible deal for Miami-Dade County, all the commissioners, except three, Robert Dico Gonzalez voted for this. A, the old 50-year-old FPL building on Flagler. I recently on Saturday went to an event, a gun buyback event, where I met Ms. Cava, another terrible mayor. Um, and I asked her about this deal and I told her, "Ms. Cava, this is a terrible deal, how can this be a good deal? I wanted to ask you, sir, this is gonna cost, over the lifetime of the FPL purchase, you're aware of that, right, sir? Are you aware of that deal?
Can you give me a little bit more details on that, just so we're on the same page?
So there's an FPL building that's on Flagler, close to the city of Sweetwater. It is 50 years old or 50 years old, Miami-Dade County bought it, they're, they're gonna buy it. The, the Commissioner, the mayor pushed for this with Rodriguez, and that, there you go, Anthony Rodriguez, the Commissioner of that area. They went ahead and they, they closed it all, that the Commission, this was about, I would say, on June the 7th. They voted to purchase the building, they're gonna, they're gonna remodel the building, they're gonna put, and guess what, more development. They're gonna put workforce apartments, blah, blah, blah. That, the building is, or 50 years old, it's for, they bought, the county voted to purchase the building for 182 million. It was originally appraised for 110 million, but they're gonna go and they're gonna pay 182 million. They're gonna overpay for a 50-year-old building with interest and everything over the lifetime of the building. This is gonna cost taxpayers $498 million.
Oh my god.
Mr. Gonzalez voted for this.
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez, can you please talk about it?
What are they gonna do with the building?
They're gonna make it the, either a regional government center or the, it's gonna be called the West Dade Government Center.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I think that's really expensive, way too expensive.
Like the county hall.
I think it's way too expensive, they should have found a, a better deal for taxpayers. They should, they should have looked a little harder for something that's more affordable for, for the county. Um, I think you continuously see this overspending at county level, um, whether it's the, uh, this building. But also, here's another thing that I don't like about Mr. Gonzalez. I went to one of his events a few weeks ago, um, it was a hurricane preparedness event. I don't, I highly doubt he cares about hurricane preparedness, he's just campaigning. And I, I went to the event, uh, just to hear from our respected police officers and, and stuff like that. But what, here's what I saw that I absolutely detest. He came in with an SUV Escalade, a personal driver, an entourage of police officers and aides. I mean, parece como si el presidente estaba saliendo al edificio.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw that video, he, well, he came out of an SUV and that...
Yeah, that's the same one, that's the same one. You know who pays for the gas for that mammoth vehicle? We do, that's probably 90 bucks to fill that tank. Who, uh, who is the person driving? It's a retired police officer, we have to pay for the salary of the, of the person.
Of course, people don't work for free.
Exactly, so, as Commissioner, day one, none of the commissioners will get this princess diva, uh, you know, deal. You have to drive yourself, you don't have a retired police officer driving you, and you drive in your own car, period. Period, same thing goes for the mayor. This, this is not, you know, England and we're not the royal family.
Beautiful, I, so, the way the taxpayer money is divided, number one, property taxes, everything. I think the latest budget is 12, 12 billion dollars, so correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, yeah.
It goes to the mayors, the mayor of Miami-Dade, it gets divided into the mayor of Miami-Dade, it goes to the Miami-Dade County Attorney, Miami-Dade County Attorney, not the state attorney. County Attorney, they work for the Commission. And it goes to each individual district office, 13 district offices, that's how it gets divided. So Mr. Gonzalez gets this money, this little pot of money that comes out of the property taxes. It's, that's how it is, and that's how he, he went and he misspent this money to relocate the district office and what you're talking about.
Yeah, uh, exactly, uh, it's a misuse of, of his county money. Listen, the misspending doesn't stop there with Mr. Gonzalez, the appointed Commissioner. Number two, he received overpayment of $1,000 a week for almost a year. It was a clerical error, so it wasn't his fault, but it was a clerical error and trust me, somebody like Gonzalez will definitely research how much a Commissioner makes before he accepts the job. So he knew he was being overpaid for a whole year, didn't say anything until the media started investigating.
So he got caught.
He got caught. Number three, he gave $10,000 of county funds to his own nonprofit, Jar of Hearts. $10,000 donation, county funds to his own nonprofit. I'm sure Jar of Hearts does commendable work, but it's his nonprofit. He's the one, he's, his law firm is the registered agent of that nonprofit. So I think that if you're gonna be county commissioner, you have to create a firewall between your own personal interests and, and the interest of the county government. You cannot be giving county government to your best friends and to your own nonprofit. So he treats his, um, office as a luxury spending account and he needs to realize that he's working for the people, not the other way around.
Bueno, te voy a hacer una pregunta. ¿Qué es lo que vas a hacer tú para mejorar el transporte de Miami-Dade, las guawas, metro rail? ¿Cuál es la visión tuya? Vamos a ver, vamos, esta pregunta en español.
Mira, el tráfico está horrible en este condado y yo he vivido aquí toda mi vida y he notado que se está poniendo peor, no mejor. Muchos políticos hablan, "Oh, voy a hacer algo sobre el tráfico, voy a hacer algo sobre el tráfico." Cuando se meten en el poder, en su cargo, no hacen nada. So, lo que yo quiero hacer es número uno, expandir y mejorar los buses. Quiero que existen más paradas en Distrito 11 y que venga más frecuentemente. También tenemos que pagar a los, a los manejadores de los autobuses más, porque ahorita tenemos mucha shortage of bus drivers, que hay muchos... You know, there's, we're not, we're not hiring enough bus drivers.
No suficientes choferis.
Yeah, exacto. Número dos, me gustaría tener un Bus Rapid Transit System, un sistema donde establecemos un carril adicional donde solamente es para los buses y esa manera las personas usando los buses llegan a su destinación más rápido. Y esto es un sistema que de verdad puede hacer los buses mucho más mejor para la gente.
Que caiga y tú hicieras eso.
Fuera, en la calle 88 y también en la, en la US One, querer un nuevo carril adicional para esto, esto exacto. Y mire, la última cosa, Alexander, que podemos hacer es detener el desestabilización de los complejos de apartamentos. Si siguen construyendo, como Gonzalez quiere seguir construyendo y todo esto, developers. Vamos a seguir construyendo apartamentos, apartamentos...
No, correcto, correcto. Mira, la información de Mr. Hernandez, el email, el website de él está bajo el ticker, aquí, okay? Y también abajo del video, a ti te gustaría decirlo por favor, tu website?
Sí, so si quieres ayudar mi campaña, visita mi sitio web, BrianForMiami, is B E D I G A N F O R for Miami. Les pido a todos tus viewers que por favor consideren donar diez dólares, veinte dólares a mi campaña. También puedes al mismo sitio web, ahí puedes donar para mi campaña. Tenemos tres semanas, faltan tres semanas para parar González y elegirme a mí. So también si quieres ser voluntario, también puedes ir a mi sitio web y poner tu información ahí. Les pido por todas sus ayudas porque yo no tengo un millón de dólares como González. Es una campaña por el pueblo, entonces les pido a todos por su ayuda.
Pero eso yo te invité, can you say that in English?
Sure. So if you want to help out with my campaign, I'd deeply appreciate it. We only have three weeks left to stop Rob Gonzalez from getting elected. And together we can stop him. My name is Brian Paz Hernandez, you can go to my website, bryantformiami.com, you can also donate. I'm asking you ten dollars, twenty dollars, that'd be a huge help. And then also, if you'd like to volunteer or calling voters or knocking on doors, you can go on my website and also sign up there, and I'd really appreciate your help.
You know, Mr. Hernandez, let me ask you, okay, so let me ask you this last question, sir. What is your vision for District Eleven? Really, what is your vision?
Love that. I love that question. My vision for District Eleven is where we have less traffic, we have better buses, we don't see any new apartment complexes where property insurance goes down and more homeowners are reinforcing their roofs, having hurricane resistant windows, putting solar panels on the roofs, having energy efficiency installations in their homes so they can save money and be, you know, help the environment. One where we have, we hold the urban development line, you know, they want to keep pushing it, they want to build next to the alligators, that's bad.
That's gonna destroy the Everglades, what's left of it, if they allow that.
Exactly. So let's keep it where it is and and have a good line between the Everglades and and development. And also, one where we respect the institution of democracy. What I mean by that is no more corrupt politicians. And then the politicians that are in, they need to follow new rules, transparency rules, campaign finance rules, so that they're not influenced by, by, you know, shady interest groups and they actually have to listen to the people. The way that this whole thing is structured is designed to drown out the voices of everyday people and give more influence to the rich. And as long as that continues to happen, everyday people like you, you and me, Alexander, are gonna be ignored and we have to change the rules.
Mr. Hernandez, before we go, what is the one thing that you can do, what, what is the one thing you can do to fix some of the parks that look terrible in the district?
Yeah, but we can, as commissioner, I definitely.
Really bad, man, really bad.
They do, they do, yeah, absolutely. I love our parks and I want to make sure that they're clean and and family friendly. So what I wanna, wanna do is work with the relevant agencies of the county to make sure that there's a guy every single day coming in to clean it up, remove any littering. There are some parts in specifics that I, I think are perfect for redevelopment, where we can see, you know, new, you know, swing sets for the kids, maybe little gyms, water fountains, community gardens, things like that, that would, would really make it a lot more beautiful. So yeah, that's something I definitely will prioritize as commissioner.
Mr. Hernandez, before we go, I'm gonna say this in English and Spanish. Everyone, thank you for tuning into the Alexander News Show. I am here with District Eleven Miami-Dade Commissioner Candidate, Mr. Brian Paz Hernandez, okay? And you can find this video, this show, this that I'm doing with him, this interview, later on on the podcasts. All the social media platforms are below the ticker, the information. And we're also on Linktree and on the video, okay? So, todo mundo, después esto va a estar en los podcasts, en la plataforma esta entrevista. Con increíble candidato del Distrito Once, comunionado. Y yo espero que la gente sea inteligente suficiente para votar por ti, Brian Paz Hernandez, okay? Pero todo, este show va a estar en la plataforma podcast, okay? Y, y yo voy a coger diferentes videos, clips de video, lo voy a poner y en los, las redes sociales que está abajo, aquí en el ticker, después lo voy a hacer. Y lo voy a poner en, bueno, eso es lo que voy a hacer, en las redes sociales, toda la información está abajo, el ticker aquí, y del video. So yeah, Mr. Hernandez, sometimes my Spanish can be a little bad, but I make an effort to try to make this bilingual. Because I have a lot of people that do speak Spanish that don't speak English, so I'm trying to. I, I mean, so, hey man, you know, I, I really appreciate you coming on the show, man.
You're welcome.
You're, you're, you have what it takes, in my opinion, after I interviewed you now, to be commissioner and do a good job. And and hopefully the people, because that, you know, I say this, you get what you vote for. So if you voted Robert Tico in, one more time, if you will, for him, he was installed there, he actually lost the state, a senate.
No, you said one more time, that's, that's not correct, he was never, he's never won an election, he was appointed after Martinez was removed. And he's never won an election.
Well, there you go. He lost, actually, he lost an election, right?
State House, State House, he ran in twenty two.
That's how bad he is, that's how terrible he is. So I hope you all vote for Mr. Brian Paz Hernandez. En el Distrito Once, agoto ente, por Mr. Brian Paz Hernandez, that's why he's on the show, okay? And aquí están, okay, aquí están las plataformas, these are the platforms, okay, for the Alexander News Show, by the way. Mr. Brian Paz, I appreciate you coming on the show, and you know, I'm gonna end this show with the video, the other video of, that I just did, the last video, that's how great, I, I see this video like ten times a week, I really do. It's so awesome. So I want to end this show with this video. I thank you for appearing on the Alexander News Show, this is, this is live, okay? Live, forget it. Thank you for appearing, man. I hope you, many blessings to you on, on coming on the show, man.
Thank you so much, God bless you and your viewers, thank you so much.
Gracias, por, por estar en el show. Commissioner Robert Tico Gonzalez is an abuser of Miami-Dade taxpayer money.
We got a crooked politician, Rob Gonzalez, who gives money to companies he represents and then the next day switches the registered agent because he's a crook. What's up, Rob? Why you so fake and phony, man? Look at this fake ass looking ass politician.
He's also a footlicker of Miami-Dade County Mayor Daniela Cavan.
He can dress however he wants, he's still crooked and fake. Guys, I used to like party when I was, when I was a kid with this loser, I used to go over his cousin's house and we used to play together.